Hearing on petition number 22P 1595 Meadow Solar LLC's request for special use permit to construct a solar energy system in Dixon Township. For those of you who somehow are listening but can't find the information and want to be on Zoom, the ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password as always is 209840. If you don't want to be on Zoom but you want the pleasure of watching us and listening to us on your computer, you can go to this or cellphone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search part, type Lee County, ill short for Illinois, zoning board of appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase letters. Select the date you want, and in theory you should be able to see and hear us. If you need technical assistance, you may call Ms. Duffy's assistance hotline, 815-973-3449. All right, just the housekeeping stuff. I will note for the record, the presence of board members, Forster, Burrow, Pratt, Meyer, Shonel, Ms. Duffy's present, as is her able alternative energy coordinator, Ms. Hinkle, State's Attorney, Charlie Boonstra is present, as is the attorney for the petitioner, Ms. Kennedy. I see one, I think one of petitioner's reps present. Lee County's IT specialist Jonathan is present, Porter is present, as is himself. That makes, two, three, four, thirteen necessaries in person. I see one, two, three interested parties in person here in the courtroom, including two August members of Lee County Board. That makes in the courtroom sixteen bodies. How we doing on Zoom, Jonathan? Okay. Okay, one person on Zoom. So that makes the total attendance seventeen. All right. I guess I'll save that. Remind me, please, don't let me forget at the end of this evening, which I don't think will be too long, let's talk about next dates for fact finding and recommendations. Before I forget, I failed to remember to admit exhibits, petitioner's exhibits, one, two, three, four, and five. I think that's it. Ms. Kennedy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to call a witness by Zoom. Mr. Josh, we shouldn't speak.
Thank you.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Can you see everybody but the back of my head?
Yes, I can see everyone but the back of your head.
Very good. You may inquire, Counselor.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine, thank you.
Could you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Joshua Bashinsky, J.O.S.H.U.A., last name Bashinsky, B as in boy, U.S.H.I.N.S.K.Y.
Thank you. And could you give us a brief overview of your educational history?
Sure. BS Stanford University, MS Stanford University, JD University of Chicago.
And how are you presently employed?
I'm a partner at Trajectory Energy Partners.
And what job duties are associated with that position?
So I oversee financing operations and have previously been responsible for all of our zoning operations as well.
And are you familiar with the proposed Meadow Solar project here in Lee County, Illinois?
I am.
And have you had an opportunity to review the second amended petition for special use permit and variances?
Yes, I have.
And have you reviewed the application submitted on behalf of Meadow Solar?
I have.
Can you tell us what a solar garden is?
Sure. A solar garden, it's an informal term for a community solar project, which is a project that creates energy from the sun and shares the savings benefits from the solar generated electricity with subscribers to the project.
And Mr. Elliott testified earlier about the savings and benefits through a subscription process. Can you expound on that a little further, more specifically, how that exactly works?
Yeah. So for Meadow Solar, we'll work directly with community members to subscribe them to the project. Each subscriber will see savings in proportion to the electricity generated by the project for which they have subscribed. And so every month, the project will generate electricity. ComEd will tally the amount of electricity generated. They will allocate the generated electricity to each subscriber based on their percentage subscription to the project. And on each subscriber's bill, they will see a credit that is proportional to the amount of electricity generated by their portion of the solar project.
So is there a subscription fee that the consumer will pay to subscribe to this project?
No, there's no upfront fee.
And will the consumer ever receive a bill from Meadow Solar for subscribing to the project?
No, all that they will see is savings that will be credited against their utility bill.
And do you know, is this project located in a ComEd territory?
Yes.
And so does that consumer have to be a customer of ComEd in order to subscribe to this project if it's cited?
Yes. Community solar projects that are in ComEd territory can only be subscribed to by subscribers within ComEd territory.
If there aren't enough subscribers to this project, who benefits from the extra power that's generated?
So the project is only able to provide savings to customers who subscribe. The project doesn't receive credit for power that is generated without a subscription associated with it. For that reason, we work really hard to make sure that there are subscribers for these projects. And in general, community solar projects in Illinois have waitlists associated with them of subscribers who would like to but aren't yet able to subscribe to a project.
And so to generate subscribers, would Meadow Solar be performing some type of outreach to local landowners in proximity to the project?
Yeah, we really focus on making sure that members of the community in which Meadow Solar will be located will have the opportunity to subscribe, and that's both residential and commercial customers are able to subscribe to the project.
What are the dimensions of the proposed panels for this project?
They're approximately six feet by three feet.
And do you know, do you know how many panels there will be for this project?
This project would have on the order of about fifteen thousand panels, but the final number would be determined in sort of final engineering and design.
Sure. And how are the panels connected to one another?
So the panels are installed on metal racking. In this case, as Mr. Elliott described last week, they're on a fixed tilt system, meaning that they are oriented in the most favorable location to generate energy from the sun. And then they are wired together and then to the project's inverters.
And will there be any communication lines utilized?
Yes, there will be communication lines that will be utilized for ComEd purposes.
And would those be buried underground?
The communication lines will either be buried underground if there is existing communication infrastructure, or be on the existing utility lines.
And how many inverters are estimated to be used for this project?
We estimate this project will require forty inverters.
And how many transformers are estimated?
Two.
And Mr. Elliott indicated on the record in his testimony that the project will likely be using union labor. Would this be local union labor?
Yeah, this project committed to using Illinois-based union labor for construction.
How far is the ComEd transmission line to which the project would connect?
So as Mr. Elliott indicated, one of the reasons that this project location is favorable is that there is a ComEd line that can accommodate the project directly north across Cemetery Road, in fact, on the same side as the premises of the project. So roughly thirty or forty feet.
And are you familiar with what's known as the agricultural impact mitigation agreement?
Yes.
And is that an agreement that is signed with the Illinois Department of Agriculture?
Yes.
And for this project specifically, is there an executed AMA?
No, the agricultural impact mitigation agreement is typically signed as the project is submitting building permits, once we've finalized some of the design elements that are necessary for the building permit. To answer shortly, the AMA has not been executed for this project yet.
And on behalf of the applicant Meadow Solar in this case, do you commit to providing a copy of that executed AMA agreement to the Lee County zoning office as soon as it's executed?
Yeah, that is part of the process of executing the agreement.
I don't have any further questions, Judge. Thank you.
All right. How about you, Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Duffy? Ms. Hinkle? Board members, Mr. Forster?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, in reference to the ComEd power lines, what's the power outage? In other words, certain solar gardens can be in different places based on what the ComEd lines are at that situation. Is that a three-phase line or a 440, or what's the situation on why it works in this situation?
So that is a three-phase line, and as Mr. Elliott indicated, we have submitted a interconnection application, and we're moving through that process. The preliminary assessment, our preliminary assessment is that that will be a very favorable location for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
No questions.
Mr. Meyer?
On the subscriber being a customer of ComEd, they have to both buy their electricity from ComEd and be delivered by ComEd to be a subscriber, is that right? Or can they be buying it from a third party and then still get the subscription?
It is possible to, to, for instance, be an Ares subscriber in some instances. The, the recommendation we typically make is that our customers for this type of project be ComEd customers, but there are other situations in which it is possible to be a subscriber of the project. The only requirement that I was referring to earlier from a territory perspective is that one must be in ComEd territory.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Shonel?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of questions here, just, just for housekeeping. Mr. Bashinsky, is that how you said?
That's exactly right.
What's your job title as opposed to your duties?
Partner.
Just partner? I mean, not just, but?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So back to this, this, this stuff about benefiting if you don't have full subscribers. So hypothetically speaking, if you did not get enough subscribers to use up, I'm sure there's a better word for it than that, but use all the electricity generated by Meadow Solar, that trajectory partners or Meadow Solar does not benefit from the excess power produced?
So Meadow Solar enters into a contract that's, the contract is defined by the Illinois Power Agency, and that contract provides the renewable energy credits, which Mr. Elliott referred to last week. We do not, we do not receive benefit under that agreement if we do not have a subscriber for the power generated. The idea is to encourage the acquisition of subscribers to be able to provide the benefits of solar savings to those subscribers. And it's also useful to think about it as on an ongoing basis. If in a given quarter, the project did not have a hundred percent subscription, it would only be for that quarter that it would not see the benefits and be able to pass along the benefits of full generation. And, and that's why, as I mentioned, because it's an attractive offering, most of these projects do, do have a waitlist.
So your financial benefit goes from selling the tax credits?
They're the renewable energy credits. So essentially, the, the contract is that we sell the energy as well as its attributes as renewable energy, and that's how we're able to provide savings to the subscribers.
Okay, thank you. You said the dimensions of the panel were six feet long, three feet wide. How thick?
They are, well, let me refer to my cut sheet before I tell you something. They are approximately one inch thick.
Thank you. I, I know you said, I just wasn't sure exactly what you said. Did you say plus or minus fifteen thousand panels? I just didn't quite understand.
Yes, and, and, but, but I would put significant brackets over that for, for the following reason.
I understand, you said plus or minus. I didn't know if the number was fifteen hundred or fifteen thousand, I just couldn't hear, that's all. The, the, the lines that, that, that run from the panels to the inverters to the transformers, are they on racks under the panels, or they don't go directly into the ground and then run to the inverter and then the transformer?
With the caveat that, that I am not an engineer, the, typically the lines between the various rows of panels would be buried underground.
Are those, I was trying to think of the word and it just dawned on me, those are called collection lines, right?
Yeah, and so they would be running from the, from each of these banks of panels to ultimately to the inverters and transformers.
Okay, thank you. Again, I think it's just a communication gift, but first you said local union labor, and then you said Illinois union labor. Are you making an effort to, 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 to ensure that the union labor comes from the greater Dixon area, the greater Lee County area, the greater Northwest Illinois area, or just the whole state?
So typically, our commitment, and in this case, is to Illinois-based union labor, not because we don't prioritize local union labor, we do. But as, as you may be aware, there is quite a bit of demand for the type of labor that is able to construct these projects. And we, we do prioritize local union labor, but the commitment that we're able to make here is to use Illinois-based union labor. And we do always try to work with local partners as possible.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. How about interested parties? Either of the August board members? All right. Anybody else's questions of this witness? Is there anybody new on Zoom besides Mr. Bashinsky? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You may continue.
Thank you. Judge, I'd like to call Mr. Dwayne Long to testify.
Long, you will raise your hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? Have a seat.
May I proceed?
You please, please.
Could you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Dwayne Long, D-U-A-N-E-L-O-N-G.
Mr. Long, you're currently the executive director of the Dixon Park District, is that correct?
That is correct.
And can you tell me what that position entails?
Lot of work. So I'm in charge of the $2 million budget, the park district, all staff, seventeen staff members total, twenty-three parks, and over eleven hundred acres of parks to take care of and brown grounds.
Do you oversee the Dixon Park District's initiatives or goals?
Yes, absolutely.
And are you familiar with the proposed Meadow Solar project here in Lee County, Illinois? And are you familiar with Trajectory Energy Partners?
Yes.
And how so?
We vetted five different companies to see if we could find a good partner for this project, and we come down to a decision to go with this company.
And where specifically is this proposed project to be located?
In the Meadows property. We own six hundred acres of property out there, so this will be on twenty-four acres of the six hundred acre.
And so you mentioned vetting five different companies, but, but why Meadow Solar?
First of all, relationship, the relationship that we felt with John himself, he was very willing to work with us, he's very educated, and he educated us in the process. And also, the lease agreement was one of the higher lease agreements among the five.
So you've mentioned an individual named John, would that be Jonathan Carson?
Correct.
And, and who is he from Meadow Solar LLC?
The owner.
And so in your opinion, this project is brought in partnership with Meadow Solar LLC, the applicant in this case, is that correct?
Yes.
And could you tell us a little bit more about this partnership?
Yes, so the partnership became that the park district was looking for extra income and trying to help out the community also with their own electric bills. And so we came up with this, and we don't want to raise taxes, so this is thinking out of the box as a park district to utilize the land that we have. It's currently being used to farm, and we wanted to make more income off it so we can keep our rates low for the use of this town.
And so in your opinion, would this provide some benefits to the Dixon Park District?
Absolutely, several benefits, and also to the community and the park district itself will receive a ten or fifteen percent decrease in our electricity bills, which we spend about twenty-four thousand a year on electricity alone. That's without the new facility we just built.
And what community outreach, if any, has the park district undertaken in furtherance of this project?
So we attended the, the meeting that John had at the shelter. Our marketing director has been on social media, drumming up education for this. And also, we are going to be doing some signs around the solar array to educate people as they walk by. And we have partnered up with trajectory to help market the whole community solar thing. So it's partially the park's responsibility to market this, and that's part of our agreement with trajectory.
And so the meeting that you referenced, would that be the community meeting that was held?
That is correct, yes.
And, and have you had any communications with the city of Dixon regarding this project?
Yes, I've had verbal communication with them.
And it's my understanding that the city of Dixon has not undertaken any official action with respect to this project, but what was the, you know, the outcome of your discussions with the city officials?
So I met with the city early on in the process, and since the city has never done a solar, you know, zoning process, they recommended that we do go through the zoning process here, and they were very aware of the project from the very beginning. We presented that to them very early, and they fully supported it at that point in time.
I have nothing further.
Okay, let's go around the horn again. Mr. Boonstra? Ms. Duffy? Ms. Hinkle? Mr. Forster?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, Mr. Long, the, all the, what's all the aspects in that the park district will be getting? They'll get credit for electricity, some income, or some reduced fees, and then is there a lease payment on top of that then?
Yes, there is. So the lease payment is $1,500 an acre on a three percent increase every year, and also a donation of $150,000 once the project is totally up and running. And that $150,000 donation can be incremented by the year or all at once, whatever the park district chooses at that time.
How long is the lease agreement stated?
I'll have to refer to Courtney on that. I believe it's twenty-five years.
Okay.
The option, there's options after that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pratt?
So how was the decision made to sign this lease?
The decision was made by our board, our board, our board voted on it with a recommendation from me, and we looked at all the other contracts at the board meeting and executive session, and then we came out of executive session and decided that...
So your board took a vote to sign with this company?
They actually signed the agreement, my president actually signed the agreement, not me, yes.
City doesn't have any input in the decision?
No, it's the park district and the park district property. We're a separate tax base.
Okay, no, no further questions.
Mr. Meyer?
Is the project in the city limits?
Is not.
Shonel?
No questions.
Okay. How about interested parties? Just raise your hand and I'll call in. Anybody yet on Zoom, Jonathan? Okay, you may step down, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time. Off the record, do you have the same nickname as anybody else in this room? Looking at the lady in white.
I have no further witnesses, Judge.
All right. That concludes the petitioner's evidence. How about your desire to produce any evidence, Ms. Duffy? Ms. Hinkle?
The only thing we have to admit is the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District Natural Resources Information Report dated August 22nd, 2022.
An objection, Ms. Kennedy?
None.
We'll call that Z-O-A. One, A, no, we'll, we'll make a difference, Z-O-A. All right? Anything else, Ms. Hinkle? Okay. Interested parties, does anyone want to present either their own testimony or the testimony of a witness that you have? Show me by a raise of a hand. Okay, anybody yet on Zoom? Okay. Well, that's easy. That concludes the production of evidence. The next stage would be any uh closing comments, closing arguments, closing statements, call it what you will. Uh, Ms. Kennedy, do you want to break together or you, you ready?
I'm, I'm ready, Judge, but.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for tuning into this hearing and, and bearing with us during this process. Um, turning your attention to the requirements under the Lee County zoning ordinance for the issuance of a special use permit under Title X, it sets forth certain factors that the ZBA has to consider in determining whether or not to recommend the issuance of a special use permit. And I'd like to go through each one of those factors and discuss the evidence and testimony presented. The first one is the effect of such proposed special use upon the character of the neighborhood. Here, there was testimony from Mr. Elliott that the solar project fits in with the agricultural use of the property according to the ordinance. Um, he did specifically touch on that the project will take the land out of row crop production, but will not take it out of agricultural production. He testified to the many benefits of the project, um, the fact that adjacent landowners and those situated in, in close proximity to the project stand to benefit from their utility savings if they become subscribers to the project. Um, the rent payments to the Dixon Park District, as Mr. Long testified to, and the increased real estate taxes. Um, again, noting that this would be a temporary use, the project will be removed and be commissioned consistent with the ordinance governing solar energy systems. The second factor is the effect on surrounding properties. Mr. Elliott testified that there will not be any loud noise or vibrations. Once the, the, the project is operational, there may be some noise and vibrations during the construction process, but this would be temporary. Um, the project will not generate any odor or shadow flicker. Um, there will be no hazardous materials affecting neighboring properties. There is not any electromagnetic radiation expected for this project, no glare. Uh, Mr. Elliott submitted the report commissioned by Cone Resnick regarding land values, which will find that there would be no negative impact to surrounding land values. Mr. Elliott also testified to the ancillary benefits to the local economy, the fact that union labor would be utilized, bringing people to the area that many businesses and restaurants, hotels could benefit during this process or during the construction process, excuse me. The third factor is impact to traffic conditions. Again, Mr. Elliott spoke to this factor and said that there may be some traffic expected during the construction period, however, this would be temporary and what he considered to be minimal. Um, once the project is operational, uh, less traffic is as, as actually expected. Um, again, once the project is operational. The fourth factor relates to public utility facilities. Um, here, there's no new infrastructure that would be required for the, um, for this project. The fifth factor is environmental concerns. Here, Mr. Elliott testified to the Eco Cat consultation that was initiated and terminated as there was no threatened or endangered species in the leasehold area. Again, the consultation requirement that's included in state statute is considered to be terminated by the Department of Natural Resources. The sixth factor is the compliance with the rules, regulations, and standards set forth in the ordinance. Here, you heard from Mr. Elliott that the applicant intends to comply with all local, state, and federal requirements as well as industry best practices. You further heard from Mr. Elliott that the project meets the requirements set forth in the ordinance governing solar energy systems. The seventh factor is other matters pertaining to the public health, safety, or general welfare. Under this factor, we believe that the community as a whole stands to benefit from the siting of this community solar project. You've heard as to how the subscription works, that those in close proximity stand to benefit. You also heard from Mr. Long as to the various benefits that the park district itself will reap from the siting of this project. Um, to this end, I believe there's been ample testimony and undisputed evidence presented from the applicant that the applicant meets all seven factors required for the issuance of a special use permit. Therefore, it's my hope that the ZBA would recommend this special use permit to the Lee County Board. Turning your attention to the variance requests contained within the application, or excuse me, the petition. Under the Lee County ordinance, where a property owner shows that a strict application of the terms of the title impose a practical difficulty or particular hardship, then the zoning board of appeals may make a variation if that variation is deemed to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance. When the zoning board of appeals is satisfied that the variation will not merely serve as a convenience to the applicant but is necessary to alleviate some demonstrable hardship so great as to warrant said variation. There are two variation requests that you've heard about contained within the petition. The first relates to the screening requirement. Um, you've heard testimony regarding the unique size and shape of the project parcel um, and the topography and natural landscaping. You've been provided with a site plan showing the existing screening that is currently in place, and Mr. Elliott further testified as to what the applicant is willing to provide as far as screening options. Under a strict reading of the ordinance, the applicant would be required to screen around the entire project parcel. Um, and it's ambiguous, I would argue at best, so we've included this variance request in here to request that the applicant only be required to screen around the actual leasehold area rather than that project parcel. Um, we believe that there's been ample evidence showing that the, to, to require the applicant to screen around the entire project parcel is unnecessary due to the topography, current screening, and river would be unduly burdensome and costly to the applicant. I mean, that the strict application would frustrate the overall purpose and intent of the ordinance, which is to shield those situated similar to the actual cited solar project. So we would request that the applicant be granted a variance, um, screening around the actual leasehold area rather than that project parcel. The second variance request relates to the setback with the Jack Mably Development Center. Under the strict reading of the ordinance, it allows for a, a variance for a setback, but only if the adjacent landowner signs a waiver to that effect. You've heard specifically from Mr. Elliott regarding the communications with the Jack Mably Development Center, especially with the local folks. Um, and, uh, they've given all indication that they have no issue with that setback request. However, this, at the actual state of Illinois has to sign that waiver, which is going to take some time. You've heard from Mr. Elliott that we're willing to condition that setback variance on obtaining a waiver from the state of Illinois. We believe this request to be in harmony with this provision as the ordinance strictly reads that a setback can be, a setback variance can be granted if a waiver is obtained. Um, we believe both variance requests be reasonable and in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance governing solar energy systems. We believe that these requests are not mere conveniences to the applicant, but rather present actual and practical difficulties that warrant such variations. Um, in conclusion, we request that the ZBA recommend both variances to the Lee County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. Any interested parties want to give a closing statement, closing?
Yes, sir.
If, if Kelly can hear you, that's fine, but you're gonna have to use the microphone and you're gonna have to, as we all learn, practically swallow it. Oh, okay. Oh, his is none, I didn't see, I couldn't see that far. Pick one with the red mic. No, she needs to be able to hear you. That, we won't pick up, it won't pick up Zoom.
Right in, okay.
I'll help you get started. State your name.
Is that clear?
And would you spell your last name for?
Len Saunders, S A U N D E R S. And I'm a representative with the uh Mid-America Carpenters Regional Council. And I just wanted to say.
So, oh, hold on.
Sorry.
Um, I went to sleep, so would you spell your name again, please?
S A U.
S A U.
N E E R S.
And first name?
Len, L E N.
Okay. And, um, do you live in Dixon Township?
I do not.
Do you work in Dixon Cha- Township? Do you, um? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I represent uh three hundred plus uh UBC members that live in Lee County. So on their behalf and other carpenters within the several counties around here, we do support this project. As uh trajectory has stated, you know, they're committed to using Illinois uh union labor, which I've already talked to John Carson and I know he will uh be relying on us locally to supply people to work on that project, so that's not an issue. Um, I was also at the public meeting when this first uh came out up at the park.
Well, now you're testifying, you, you can't, you, you can only argue from the evidence presented.
Okay, we support this project.
Fine, got it. Um, what was yours, what was your position with UBC?
I'm a representative.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. All right, any other interested parties? All right, anybody still, any extras on Zoom that? Okay, well, that co- closes the uh, the hearing, all the evidentiary and argument portion of the hearing altogether. The next step, as we know, is fact finding and recommendation by the ZBA. And I actually remembered that we need to address some dates. Never fear, I, I have no, had really had not much of a desire to do Friday. I thought I'd hear more squealing than, than I did, but I didn't. I need time, as you know, to put together, based on the evidence we've heard, some motions that you may or may not consider. Um, in order to give me that time, I am looking at, and we might be able to do this in one night, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you, I know we could, but we might. But let's pick two days. Um, Tuesday, the September thirteenth, is the courtroom available, Ms. Duffy? No, yes, yes, okay. Um, how about you, Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Burrow?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. Show notes?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Ms. Duffy, how about you personally, besides the courtroom? Ms. Hinkle? Mr. Boonstra? And uh, um, Ms. Kennedy, I'm certainly not ignoring you, but, and, and obviously, first of all, you're welcome to be here in seconds of public hearing, so you can be, but there's no participation from you, so there's, there's no need to ask you about your availability. How about you, um, Ms. Reporter? Jonathan? And I am as well. Okay, Wednesday, the fourteenth, courtroom. Ms. Duffy? How about you personally, Ms. Duffy? Ms. Hinkle? Mr. Boonstra? Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Mr. Burrow?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Uh, Mr. Show notes?
Yes.
How about you, Ms. Reporter? Jonathan? And I am as well, okay. So I can now say we will continue the next session, we will um take a recess of this session until seven o'clock on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Here at the, hmm, it's Tuesday, Kelly's right, it's Tuesday, September thirteenth, here at the old, the third floor of the old Lee County courthouse. See you then.